Call to order. We will start with the invocation by Vice Mayor McCray, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Casella. Would everyone please rise?
Let us bow to the creed and make of all mankind. Heavenly Father, we come before thee this afternoon in the humblest manner that we know how. We come recognizing first that thou art sovereign, a sovereign God. We ask that you look down upon this meeting, that you continue to lead us and guide us, and let us do what is pleasing in your sight. If we disagree, let us come back to the table and come back and go out, still being friends. We ask that you look down upon this city, bless the workers, bless our city manager, but most of all, bless all the citizens here in this community. As we go to a Yuletide season, we ask that you let us know the reason for the season. We thank you for all of your blessings. We cannot all join, in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mac McCray.
Here.
Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
And Commissioner Joe Casella.
Here.
All present.
Agenda approval, any additions, deletions, or corrections? I'd like to move item 12B in front of the consent agenda. I told Kids Dreams that they should be available at 7:00. You're here now? Okay. So would you be okay for putting it in front of right after announcements?
Second up.
Thank you.
For doing that, Mayor, would you like to also move the community caring center as well with that?
Is the community caring center here?
Yeah, here.
Okay. So we'll move that also in front of... What number is that?
That's 12C. Oh, I'm sorry.
12D. Okay.
Do you have the old agenda today?
Seeing no more additions, deletions, or corrections, may have adoption of the amended, revised agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's begin with informational items. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Yeah, just I was able to attend the League of Cities meeting about, I want to say, a week and a half ago, because I was off from school. All these meetings usually held during the day, so I don't really get to attend them, but it was nice to be able to do that. And I had a really good time at the holiday tree lighting the other night and was thoroughly impressed with what staff put on and CRA and just the crowd, and you know, the attendance was really awesome.
Vice Mayor McCray?
Thank you, sir. First thing I want to say, sir, is welcome back. I'm tired of filling in for you.
Thank you.
Too long weeks, good. Doing a disclaimer tonight, and I'd like to say to the city manager, thank you for the new chairs. Little hard, but thank you for the new chairs. I'd like to start off by doing a disclaimer. I met with attorney Bonnie Miskel and her group. I met with members of the Florida Textile Recycling Program. I did the Palm Beach County League of Cities luncheon hosted by our own city. I did the Bethesda Hospital Legislative Luncheon. I attended a class at Palm Beach State College for Ethics Connections Program. I passed our dinners at Rainbow City Grocery to over 450 people over the holidays, served Thanksgiving dinners on Cherry Hill with about 150 along with other ministers, attended a meet your candidates for my guests, that's what VRG call it, at their place. And since I went there, I'd like to say to the city manager Lori, and also to our chief, that you all can get with Mr. Floyd Zonestine and the president of VRG. And the reason for this meeting is to set it up in the daytime so that I can attend along with any other members from VRG. The purpose of this meeting is we need to get control of traffic, that's from Federal Highway to Seacrest Boulevard, that's the speeding. We need to sit down and dialogue. Also attended the holiday parade. For those of you who've seen the parade, a lot of y'all wonder why I was not up on the back of my car. I had a six-year-old to the left, a two-year-old on my left knee, and a baby who enjoyed the parade so much that he went to sleep, so I had to be seated. But that's about it. But it was an awesome event. I just wanted to tell the city of Boynton, thank you for all that you do to staff. Things do go unnoticed, but you always run out there working real hard to make sure that everything went in place. For those that missed it, you missed a great parade, and next year it's going to be even bigger and better. Thank you.
Let me go speak about my trip to Taiwan. It was amazing experience. Thank you for, Commission, for allowing me to go, and so I brought each of you back a piece of jade that I got at the jade market over there.
We don't have to claim this, this is, you know...
This is under $100.
Just want to make sure, thank you.
And it was very interesting. Taiwan has been in the news recently regarding President-elect Trump speaking with the president of Taiwan, and I thought, I think it's a great thing in the sense that Taiwan is a democratic country, they have a female president, and they are LGBTQ friendly, where I also studied abroad in China, which is a communist country, which does not hold democratically elected elections, and is not necessarily as friendly to the LGBT community. The main thing that I came back is that Taiwan really appreciates having the United States as a trading partner. In fact, they don't get any of their wheat but for the United States. 100% of their wheat that they use to make all their pastries, all their noodles comes from the United States because they say we have the best tasting wheat in the world. And I also met with a multitude of different elected officials, the new Taipei city mayor, and I think the main thing that I came from was, is that Taiwan is looking to have beneficial trading partners and also to help the world to make it a better place. I went to a nonprofit organization called Su Chi, and they showed me a video that I put up on my Facebook of them being in Haiti, in La Kaye, our sister city, a week after Hurricane Matthew hit. The other cool thing I saw was the Buddhist temple outside of Kaohsiung and their high-speed rail, which was amazing. And I think I'll have to do a little longer speech about this over at the library soon. I also attended the League of Cities event that we held at Boynton Beach over at Ben Venuto. I lit my first Christmas tree, which was very fun, with Commissioner Katz. I was able to go on the holiday parade, and I got the red card that I wanted. And this past Monday, I met with Jim Teck of Access. He is the, works for the Palm Beach County School Board and helps 18- to 22-year-olds who are still in high school transition into becoming self-sufficient. So they're having a great program that I'll get some more information out. And then today, I was at the county commissioners' meeting stating that I'd like to have them have business tax receipts for landlords. There are currently no business tax receipts for landlords in the county level, so therefore the tax collector doesn't know who to collect on a transient for the tourist developmental tax because they don't know which single-family residence is leasing for under six months versus over six months. So I'm going to be trying to push the county commissioners to issue that business tax receipt. And that's it for me. So Commissioner Romulus?
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. I am back. I made it in one piece. All jokes aside, though, I recently came back from Haiti, came back yesterday, had a five-day trip over there where we went to provide medical assistance to individuals. This trip was originally meant to be in the south, the southern peninsula of Haiti, but due to political turbulence and other things, and just safety measures, we decided to stay, prevent a nine-hour trip to get down there and put ourselves in harm's way. So we were in the, right outside of Port-au-Prince area, and thanks to Chief Joseph and several members of Boynton Beach Fire Station, and we had several other individuals with us in the delegation, we had doctors, nurses, and other elected officials. We went to Haiti, and we provided basically a mobile clinic. Each day we changed locations, then each day we saw over 100 people and provided assistance to these people, and you know, these people, this is their only access to health care whenever medical missions trips comes into town. So we saw individuals like a two-year-old boy who came in with 100-plus degree fever walking around like everything was okay, to a woman who was suffering from stage four breast cancer who had been told that she had water accumulating in her breasts, so she had no idea that she had breast cancer. And Dr. Dorsonville, who was a doctor along with us on the trip, made the diagnosis. So this was a great trip. It was a great opportunity for individuals who do not know the extent that Haiti has been going through, even outside of the southern area, to see that and to be able to provide assistance in that regard. So I do want to personally thank all the individuals who contributed to the PBC Haiti Relief Group. The funds have not been used, they have not been dispersed, they were not used during this trip because this trip did not go to the southern peninsula, and as we said, we do plan to use those funds for the south, especially areas like La Kaye and Jeremee. So those funds have not been used, and they will not be used until we can make sure that they will be used for the southern area of Haiti. So we are still collecting funds. You can always donate at pbchaitirelief.org, and we'll make sure that those funds get to the area that they're needed. Outside of that, prior to going to Haiti, did some other things. Attended the inauguration or the swearing-in of newly-elected officials, Mac Bernard and Dave Kerner for Palm Beach County. I also sat down with Bonnie Miskel and her group. I met with Andre Park, Attorney Andre Park, with the Florida Textiles. I attended the Bethesda Legislative Luncheon. I also attended the legislative preview at Palm Beach State College hosted by the League of Women Voters. That was pretty enlightening in light of newly-elected officials that will be leading in the Florida State House and also on the Congress, US Congress level. It was also an opportunity for us to host several cities in Palm Beach County by being part of the League of Cities. We hosted all the other cities in Palm Beach County at our Ben Venutos Restaurant. That was a great opportunity to meet other individuals and have them see our beautiful city and our beautiful restaurant, what we have to offer here in Boynton Beach. So definitely, I'm looking forward to the work that we have to do here in Boynton Beach and everything else that we are going to be doing for the holidays in 2017. We have lots of things ahead of us, and I'm especially excited about some of the things that we have on the agenda even tonight. So that's all I have for tonight in terms of my comments. I'll pass it over to Commissioner Casella.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I'd like to start by saying I did have a meeting with Bonnie Miskel and her client also. I also attended the Palm Beach City League of Cities over here held in our city, and I'd like to thank our staff and Eleanor in particular, the way the centerpiece of those tables looked, he did our city real proud, and there's a lot of great comments coming out of that. Also, the holiday parade. Most of you probably have watched the parade, and I'm always impressed with, there's so many moving parts to have a parade. Everyone loves a parade, but there's so many moving parts to it. And our own Wally Majors, he's like a, he doesn't like to get the acknowledgement, but he's like a conductor out there in a way, he gets everyone where they need to be at the time they need to be there, and it's quite masterful on how he does it. And thank you, Wally, for that. It was job well done. I also attended the Coalition of Boynton West Residential Association, better known as COBIR, those are our communities to the west of our city. And as people who live here in Boynton Beach can see, they're having some real growing pains out there as far as the development that's going on out there. And what, in my opinion, what's happening is that they're actually forming their own little cities out there with all the amenities that a city has to offer as far as doctors and food and entertainment. And I've got some concerns that at some point, there will be no need to ever cross east over military anymore because all the amenities they'll ever need out there west will be there. So those, some of the things that we need to think about in the future. Also, I attended the sober home task force, Dave Aronberg's, as you know, I'm in the sober home task force. And tonight I brought a bunch of tip cards, they're in the back room there. And if you see in your neighborhoods, a lot of these sober homes that exist, we don't even know they exist, but if you see some strange individuals walking through your neighborhood pulling a suitcase or convoy of some white vans pulling up at certain times of the day, it's probably a good bet that you do have a sober home in your neighborhood. And there's a number here, a tip number, that you can call if you see anything suspicious like that. You call, you tell them what they see, they'll follow up on it. It might be something, it might not be anything. Also, in closing, January 28th, we're in partnership with our state rep Lori Berman, and we're going to have a farm share giveaway. And St. John's, thank you, Woodrow, for helping facilitate that, is allowing us to use a lot next to them. And what this is, is that the Coalition of Farmers, they give this food away, and it comes in a big trailer. And it, we did it a couple of years back, and we were so successful with it. This time, we're going to put it right down in the community where the people that can use it need it the most. So January 28th, and why I mention this now is because we're going to need a lot of volunteers to help us. I know Chief Katz and Chief Joseph. Chief Katz will be calling on those Explorer Scouts that, once again, they always do a great job for us. And Chief Joseph, your firefighters always come out in numbers to help us with this. So we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I save the best for last. I'd like to just say to Alexandra Seltzer, the Palm Beach Post staff writer who covers a lot of things here in Boynton, I want to commend you. I just got the article tonight for the Boynton Police Officers Going to Schools to Mentor Young Boys. Job well done. You covered it well. I'd like to say to Chief, thank you, sir, this is what I'm talking about. Do a little bit more. This is what you call reaching the community where it needs to be reached. Thank you, sir. Pass it on to the boys in blue. I'm 100% behind them. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
No more informational items, moving on to announcements. And that's the Florida Department of Transportation informational meeting on January 10th, 2017, at 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM in the Boynton Beach City Library located at 208 Seacrest Boulevard. Rich Dennis, Public Information Specialist with Infinite Source Communications Group, will be, present and offer a short presentation of the proposed improvements. Oh, thank you.
Good evening.
Into the microphone.
My name is Carl Dovell. I am a project manager at the Florida Department of Transportation. The reason that I'm here today is to discuss one of the projects that we have going on on I-95 from the L-30 canal all the way up to Gateway Boulevard.
Sir, excuse me, you want the, a little bit louder.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was saying that...
I'm the oldest thing up here, and if I can't hear you, they probably can't hear you.
Right, right.
Thank you. There you go.
I was saying that the reason that I'm here today is to present a project to the public. The project is on I-95 between L-30 canal all the way up to Gateway Boulevard. We have with me Cecilia Villarreal, who is the project manager, the consultant project manager, and also Richard Dennis, who is the media consultant, and he will be presenting the project to the audience here.
Thank you, and thank you to the mayor and the commission for allowing us this opportunity to give you some details on the project and our public involvement efforts, and we're going to look at the limits of the construction project, which on the southbound I-95 lane began at the L-30 canal, and that's just north of Lake Outer Road, and it's going to go all the way north of Gateway Boulevard. And on the northbound I-95 lane, it starts south of Boynton Beach Boulevard and goes to north of Gateway Boulevard. And the project corridor will be a limited access facility, and it's going to run through the cities of Delray Beach and Boynton Beach. And as Carl mentioned, we're having a public information meeting to discuss the project and answer any questions and address any concerns that the public may have, and that's going to be on January 10th, 2017. And right now, we're proposing nighttime construction, and we anticipate there to be minimal impact to the traveling public during the construction. If you look at the map, it's kind of a little tiny, but up on the left, there's an arrow, and that's where the work begins, and that's the southbound lane, the pink line is the southbound lane, and that's the L-30 canal up there on the left, and that's north of Lake Outer Road. And again, it goes all the way to the north of Gateway Boulevard, and on the northbound I-95 lane, which is the blue line, which I can barely see, goes from south of Boynton Beach Boulevard to north of Gateway Boulevard. And there's also a little work, there's another blue little line kind of in the middle, and those are the on-and-off ramps of Woolbright Road, and there's also going to be work conducted there. The design for the project commenced on November 2015, and we're anticipating that to be completed next July of 2017, with the bid opening just five months later in December 2017. And construction should start spring of 2018 and run 18 months, which should take us to about fall of 2019, and the construction cost is 12.5 million. So what are they going to do? The proposed improvements include repaving and restriping I-95, and also repaving and restriping the on-ramps and the off-ramps at Boynton Beach Boulevard and Gateway Boulevard, and the off-ramps at Woolbright Road. They're also going to upgrade the roadway lighting and some signage. And the details on the public information meeting are, the date is, like I said before, Tuesday, January 10th of 2017, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and it's going to be held at the Boynton Beach City Library, and there will be representatives there. It's going to be informal, open house, there's not going to be really any formal presentation, but we're going to have representatives from DOT there that will be available to answer any questions and address any concerns the public may have. And that's it. We'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
I have one. I noticed that when you all start construction, you always start it at 9:00 at night. Can you move it up to 10:00? I want to get home.
We can look into that.
Thank you.
That's a nice way of saying no.
No, typically, what we do, we, you know, we look at the traffic on I-95, and we have a system whereby when the traffic goes to a certain level, we would be able to close the roadway without too much impact to the public. We hope that we would have been able to do the projects, you know, the construction project, without any impact, but that's not realistic, and we would hope that everyone...
When is the expected start date?
Spring 2018.
Okay. Any questions from the public audience? Nope. Thank you.
If I could emphasize on the date of the meeting, it would be January 10th between...
6:00 and 8:00.
6:00 and 8:00.
All right, thank you so much. We'll have any questions, we'll ask them. The 45th Annual Boynton Beach CRA in the city of Delray Beach Holiday Boat Parade will be on Friday, December 9th, 2016, and will start at 6:30 PM. And then our last announcement is, the city of Boynton Beach has once again been named the first-place winner for large cities in Palm Beach County for the 2016 Read for the Record campaign. City staff and residents read the Bear H-er Sandwich to over 2,400 students in one day on October 27, 2016. We are delighted to announce this is the fourth year in a row we've won this honor.
Wait, we need to get with Lori. Lori? We have a guest person.
Remember last meeting, I just realized that, and the chief just texted me, that the commission had asked that the officer that replaced Rita Swan in the cops program...
Okay. I wasn't here, so...
So I'm going to come on up to these...
Yeah, please.
That's right, you weren't, but that's why I just went to the vice mayor.
Okay.
Good evening. How are you? I'm Officer Shreckengos.
I'm not going to call you Shreck.
AKA Shreck. First name is Denise, a little easier. Just wanted to take a minute to introduce myself. I'm excited to be the new crime prevention officer, and hope to bring a lot of good things to all of our communities, and I'm excited to get started. A couple of months into it, and just been having a great time. I just wanted to come down and introduce myself so y'all get the face and know who I am. Nice to meet you too, Mayor.
Thank you.
Denise, have you met with the cop program at VRG?
Oh, yes, sir. I actually have had a couple of meetings. Actually had a meeting there today.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. I've been attending all the COP meetings.
Officer Denise, are you going to, I know I've worked with Officer Swan on the Smart Water. Is that the project? Is that still an ongoing thing?
Yes, sir, it is.
It was real successful in my district.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
I'm going to be, we're just getting some more kits in because we got rid of the first batch, so we have another batch that is starting to come in now, and I'm going to start hitting up some of the local communities of some of the residents that don't have it.
That'd be great. I'd like to have you come back to District 4 again.
Yes, absolutely.
You did some great job.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 12B, approve the request of Mayor Stephen B. Grant to distribute $300 of his community support funds to Kids Dreams, a nonprofit organization. John, would you please come down and tell us a little bit more about Kids Dreams?
I wish I had been told that I would address the council, but I will give you a one-minute, very quick rendition. Kids Dreams is a 501(c)(3) charitable organization, of which 100% of the donated funds go to the children. There are no employees, it's all done by volunteers, people that work at Broad and Cassell, and others around the community donate their time, et cetera. Since 2012, Kids Dreams has donated a little over $4,000 to students from the Boynton Beach High School for the Alan LeBeau Awards at the Kravitz Center for Shakespearean Excellence. These are kids that are involved in the Shakespearean thing, and they have an opportunity to work with professionals at the Kravitz Center, and we've done that. Additionally, Kids Dreams donates money to, of course, Title I schools, Boynton Beach and other communities, for kids for summer camp, for other educational facilities, other educational experiences. And my favorite most recently is there's a young lady from Boynton Beach High School that had an interest in becoming a marine biologist, and through a $1,000 donation of Kids Dreams, she was able to travel to Bonner to pursue her dream of becoming a marine biologist. And on behalf of Kids Dreams, we would like to thank Boynton Beach, Mr. Mayor, members of the council very much for the most generous donation, and we will assure you that all of your donation will be used for Boynton Beach students and children. Thank you.
I'll call down to community caring center.
Got a motion to approve?
Oh, okay, yeah, sure.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just before we call community caring, I'd like to ask Chief Katz, is there any money, Chief Katz, are you paying attention? All right. Is there any money, is there any money in our forfeiture fund that we might could see if we could assist this group? Thank you. There's some more funds. See how smart I am? Thank you.
I have to call down Michelle Davis-White and her Honeydew Boys.
Evening.
We are 501(c)(3) as well. We've been in the community for 29 and a half years, but the Senior Veggie Mobile Program started December 2010, and so we are seven years and still growing. The Senior Veggie Mobile Program affords seniors the opportunity to get out and mingle amongst other seniors that they may not only, they only see probably doing... amongst other seniors that they may not only, they only see probably doing during funerals. This opportunity affords them to get out sometimes two to three times a month to socialize because we know that when seniors are isolated and they don't leave in a senior community or population, they begin to dwindle in health, depression, as well as isolation. So we are here today, these are the guys, we transport them to all of our events, those that don't have, don't have the ability to drive or don't own any type of transportation. We also deliver fresh fruit and vegetables to them twice a month, every Tuesday and Thursday. So we welcome you guys and ladies, and ladies, the opportunity to go out on our Senior Veggie Mobile and meet some of our 170-plus seniors. We have a pulse and a thumb that I boast on this community of seniors. I can tell you the names of each and every one of them that are part of the Senior Veggie Mobile population, including Vice Mayor McCray's mother. And we just had a function on Friday that we did, we didn't do a fashion show for them, we did a fashion walk. And 12 of these senior ladies participated in that, and you got to go to Facebook to check it out. It's awesome. And they were, they were given an opportunity to fashion our outfits, some of Brenda Williams' fashions, she is a breast cancer survivor, so I told her I wanted to help her, you know, because she's not working right now due to chemo and radiation. So they bought a lot of her items and it was a big success. These guys here, I couldn't do this program without them, nor the, under the auspices of Sherri Johnson, our executive director. I am Michelle Davis-White, the senior program director of the Veggie Mobile program. And I forgot to give you my address, which is 10119 Boynton Place Circle, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33437. So we are asking that we have a well-planned holiday celebration, senior style, for them at the Intracoastal Park Clubhouse on December 20th, Tuesday, at 11:00 a.m. All of their activities start at 11:00 a.m. They are held at the First Presbyterian Church, who's graciously given us the opportunity to render them services there anytime we need them. So these guys here, again, I couldn't do any of this without them. They transport them, they handle them with kid gloves, and they love seeing these gentlemen come to their homes, especially the ladies.
Thank you, Michelle. I'd just like to add to, the Community Caring Center is really dear and near to my heart. I know my wife is volunteer down there and we observe the work that you actually do in the community for the people who need it the most. And gentlemen, I thank you also, Michelle and Sherri Johnson, you truly are the angels here on earth that help our population, and I appreciate that. And gentlemen, same to you. Thank you so much for all you do.
I'd just like to say to you all before you go, I know all three of you personally, I'd like to say to the guy on the left-hand side, yeah, I'll see you tomorrow morning at the place to pick up vegetables, thank you. Yeah, we do bump into each other, so I know you do hard work because I'm about to give out, man, but I'm hanging in there.
I hear you. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
I'd like to offer a motion that we approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to public audience, individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations.
Mayor, is your item C, is that included?
No, I'm going to table that until the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll do it. We'll get to it when we get to it.
My name is Michael Brunson, I live in Leisureville, and I'm here to discuss a matter of quality of life and a matter of public safety. This time of year, our residents' numbers swell greatly, especially the elderly folks, and their eyesight is fairly poor at times. And I don't know if, as you have been driving around at night, if you've noticed the vast number of streetlights that are out in our community. In an audit, number of lights are out. I'll give you, for instance, Northwest 8th Street, from Woolbright to Boynton Beach Boulevard, there's over 10 lights out on that one street alone. Congress, between 95 and, or, I'm sorry, Boynton Beach Boulevard between Congress and 95, a main thoroughfare, at intersections, you've got lights out. Who repairs them? Who pays for them? We do with our tax money, don't we? It's a matter of public safety and it needs to be addressed. I don't know who reports the lights out, I don't know who they're reported to. I did 37 years as a cop, and I know Boynton Beach has got a lot of problems, but we have some public service aides, I believe, and I don't know for sure, but if they work at night, but you have your handicap parking enforcement people too that are volunteers. Maybe they can start taking some of these numbers down. I would think that the polls have numbers on them and they can be reported, but it's something that needs to be addressed for public safety. I beg you to please address it. Thank you.
Sir, I have the number for you. It is 1-800-4-outage, O-U-T-A-G-E. If you do have that poll number, that is the number that I got from FPL.
All right, that's fine, and I understand and I appreciate that, but the problem is this, I'm going to stop on Boynton Beach Boulevard, walk over and get a poll number? I don't think that's, the public should be doing some of these things. If it was in front of my house, I'll agree with you. But these major thoroughfares, there should be some kind of program that addresses it, either the crime prevention officer maybe helping, the explorers, someone to get these numbers and report them. It's a waste of our tax money because you're paying for it whether it's on or off, correct? It's not on a meter, you probably pay so much per year, per light. So it's money going down the drain. Thank you.
Sir, excuse me, that would be something that the city manager can get with staff because I noticed from Walmart all the way to Ocean Avenue on US-1 that they're out and I'm like saying, what the hell is happening? I'm up at four o'clock in the morning. I agree with you, I see it, so you brought it to our attention, staff will address it, and thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Suzanne Ross, Schoolhouse Children's Museum. 'Tis the season, and the museum has lots of things planned for the holidays. In addition to our regular programming, the following activities either have or will take place during, at the museum during the month of December. December 2nd was Smores Day. December 9th, this Friday evening, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. is the Puller Express Extravaganza, a drop-in shop for members from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. We have had one mom already sign up and indicated she does not plan to shop, she plans on taking a nap and enjoying the peace and quiet. December 16th is Grinchmas. Gingerbread Workshop is December 21st. Hanukkah with Miss Helen is December 22nd. Reindeer Games is December 23rd. The museum will be open half a day on December 24th, Christmas Eve, until 1:00 p.m. Will be closed, of course, on Christmas. The museum will be open on Monday, the 26th, normally on Monday we are closed, however, it will be Boxing Day, or our version of Boxing Day. Winter Wonderland will take place on December 28th and will wind up the month on December 31st with our annual Happy New Year event, a chance for little ones to ring in the New Year, a balloon drop, and apple juice toast at noon. We hope to see you all there.
Dr. Pierre Blas, 113 West Tara Lake Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida. So happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas to everybody. My first comment is that I think the city is functioning beautifully, and we have a terrific city commission and terrific mayor, so, you know, once again, we have the best city in the country. My, as you know, my ambition is to, I know it's a little boring at Christmas and Hanukkah, but to move us to the next level and to develop a University of Boynton. We've been doing some work, there are students from all over the world studying with us, although we don't really have a, well, we have a building, you all know, but we're not using it, the old high school. And I know the mayor promised me a classroom at some point with even this fiberglass or something, so I'll take you up on it. But, so, there is approximately 100 students studying at the University of Boynton right now. But I think that maybe, I would like to remind everybody that we have this high school, we're going to preserve it. And what I would suggest, and I'm willing to coordinate it if people would like to work with me, is we need to start designing a structure that would encapsulate that high school and, as I keep saying, and build a much taller structure that would be of economic benefit to the city. Because I think this area is not a liability, it should become an asset. And so I just want to remind everybody that that is in my heart, and it should be a public-private partnership because how, there's no other way to get the money to get that done. And, well, that's all, and thank you very much.
Everyone on the dais, God bless you, everyone in the audience. Ms. Lawrence, city manager, thank you very much for handling that situation with the Sarah Sims apartment at West...
You forgot to give your name and address.
Minister Bernard Wright, 713 Northwest Second Street. Let me just say, Mr. McCray, Commissioner, I really thank you. That was a issue that was hanging too long, we have not got it resolved. But let me just make clear right now about this lighting situation where the outages are. That's a great issue. And there's another great issue, Martha King Jr. Boulevard, which is Robert E. Wells Memorial Avenue, for years, it's been without amp light, and it's a thoroughfare. I thought I'd bring it back again since he just mentioned that and it hit my spirit. I've been talking about this for six years. Where do we go to get amp lighting? What do we need? Where do, I mean, when does it start to get this, this spirit of a better Boynton, you know, in these major areas, you know, major issues like amp lighting, a public issue. Down Martha King Jr. Boulevard, many years, hasn't been anything. So now, who do we talk to now about that? Florida Power and Light? The city commissioner? Who do we talk about starting getting some concrete lighting down and amp lighting down that street?
Sir, I can address that you are addressing your city commission, I represent District 2, I represent MLK Boulevard, you have just addressed it, I will work on that, I will pass that on to staff, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Thank you.
No more public audience, moving on to administrative. We'll be appointing eligible members to the community to serve in vacant positions on city advisory boards. First, I'd like to, for the Arts Commission, appoint Susan Sawyer, from the current alternate to a current regular member.
Clarifications, so she'll now be serving both on the Historic Board and the Arts Commission?
Yes.
And is that fine?
Yes.
Yep. And we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Appointment granted. Moving on to the Education and Youth Advisory Board. I think that the way this should work is just go in order, so Vice Mayor McCray, would you like to begin?
Thank you, sir. I'm going to request, and I'm not going to request, I'm going to table mine because Mr. Murphy, who was appointed as an alternate at our last meeting, he has requested to me personally that he want to serve as a regular, he is an educator here in Palm Beach County. I'm going to table mine until he resubmit his application. Thank you.
Commissioner Romulus?
I'd like to appoint Peggy Lookere for the regular board member, as a regular board member for the Education Youth Advisory Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll go down and wind, I'll look at Carla Colebrooks, she's a current regular, be reappointed.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
I'd like to appoint Lisa Brown-Bannock as a...
If I may, I do believe that she preferred to be on the Parks and Rec Board.
Okay.
Judy, can you clarify on that? Because she's on both.
Yes, that's true. She had two applications, but she would prefer Rec and Parks.
Then I will continue with Carol Lundquist, who is a current regular on the Education Youth Advisory Board.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And like to appoint Anthony Alteri as the alternate.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Since we stopped, Judy, let me ask you a question. Since we have people that wants to prefer, can you put like a parentheses or something, prefer this board or something like that? I'm just saying, since the name appearing twice, something to signal...
We've done that before where we've let them pick a first choice, second choice, and third choice. That gets pretty confusing when you have a lot of appointees. That's not on the application at this time. The only reason we did that with Lisa was because she has called and indicated that with the commissioners and at our office and with some of the boards. So usually, we don't give them a choice.
Well, my take is, Julie, Judy, is that you could just put behind there, prefer in parentheses, whatever board it is that she's under this, it's just, you know, it's not said first, second, or third.
I know that.
Just have a one, you know, just one for preferred.
Right, all right.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Katz?
I'll nominate Robert Whedon for second alternate.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the other student?
That would be McCray.
Sorry.
It'd be Jerry Anna Rodriguez.
Have a second?
Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to appoint Jesse Felman to the alternate for Historic Resources Preservation Board.
Second.
All those in favor? Planning and Development Board, I'd like to appoint Floyd Zonstein to the regular.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll appoint James Brake, who's a current alternate to a regular position.
Second.
All those in favor? Vice Mayor McCray?
Andrew Padre. Regular.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Trevor Rosenkrantz, regular.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Commissioner Casello?
This nomination will be, he's a regular now, he'll now go to an alternate?
Correct.
Nicholas Sarkaki?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then that means I will appoint Stephen Palmero to alternate.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus, Rec and Parks Board?
I'd like to appoint Lisa Brown-Bannock.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll nominate Charles Kanter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to appoint Christina Johnson.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCray?
Julie Mandelow as an alternate.
All those in favor? Aye.
If you get a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Senior Advisory Board, I'll appoint Marcia Bianto to the regular.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll appoint Janet Harris.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just for appointment information, we just changed the makeup of the Planning and Development Board by, we had regulars on there, now alternates?
That is correct.
That's correct. Okay?
And moving on to item B, Commissioner Katz has requested to discuss moving the December 20th to... 20th, 2016 Commission meeting to Monday?
Yeah, just at, you know, at the will of the Commission, request that we move that up one day, it's, you know, the holiday week, there's a lot going on, I know there will be certain schedule conflicts, I have a couple, it's finals or midterm week in, you know, Public Education, there's a couple of big items on the, the scheduled agenda for that Tuesday, so for me to miss it, for instance, the evaluation of our City Manager, it would just be detrimental to miss some of those votes, so I'd just kindly request that we bump it up one day, plus again, moving it one day further away from the holidays gives everybody a little extra time in between the meeting and, and some of the pending holidays, so I think it would be a benefit to everyone, hopefully.
And did you look into the cost to the taxpayers?
Yeah, Laurie said, I think that something to the effect that something would have to be advertised and it might cost $600, is what she said.
Yeah, we have one, it was just one ordinance, isn't it, Andrew? Yeah, one ordinance that we'd have to readvertise.
And with regards to that, I'll make a pledge to the public to fight to save thousands of times more than that $600 during the course of my term up here, so you will get return on the $600, I promise you.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Alright, all those in favor of moving the December 20th meeting to Monday, December 19th?
Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on, I received a request from James Green, organizer of, called My Brother's Keeper Initiative, he asked me to appoint a pastor, I thought I'd bring that to the Commission. I was planning on attending the My Brothers Keeper's event, however Hurricane Matthew canceled it, will be attending the one in February, and I just wanted to let anyone know if there's anyone else that wanted to take the lead on that, or I'll be happy to continue whatever needs to be done.
I offer motion that you continue, sir.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to public hearing, Jim?
This is the reading of Ordinance 1601-8, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida approving amendments to the Comprehensive Plan Coastal Management Element to address new statutory requirements pertaining to prevention mitigation of flood hazards in the coastal areas along with updating the remaining objectives and policies to account for completion and changes in the city's programs, providing for conflict severability at an effective date. This is a second reading and public hearing.
May I have a motion to?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, with the...
We need a roll call.
I know, we're not, you know, we also have to let the public speak too.
Yep.
So, does the Commission want to go first or open up to public comment?
Comments from me.
Alright, anyone from the public would like to speak on any of the amendments or changes to the Comprehensive Plan? Seeing none, is there someone from staff that I can speak to about this? Alright, so, two things that I want to talk about, I'm glad that we got the trolley system still in place, that the city and the CRA will work to reinstate, you know, trolley to the Ocean Park. The second thing I was looking at, what said, the objection on page 313 of the backup, objections, recommendations, and comments report, the comment two was the peril of flood policies, and after reading and going into further regarding the, that we meet, we appear to meet the minimum requirements of chapter 16, Florida Statute 163 dot 31782F, that statute reads, "A redevelopment component that outlines the principle that must be used to eliminate inappropriate and unsafe development in the coastal areas when opportunities arise." I just want to know, is there stuff that we, are we going to the minimum level of safety that's required by the Florida Statute, or we, you know, is that, that's what we've met, is there a way that we can go above that standard? And, because I believe in climate change, and I'm worried that if we have any sea rise in the next 10, 20 years, that it will affect any new redevelopment of that area.
Well...
Yeah, you want to?
That's more of an engineering question.
Okay.
Colin Graff, City Manager, I was here to answer engineering questions, and that's more of a engineering question. The answer is, is Comprehensive Plan, we take the minimum standards, the FEMA sets all of those elevations and all the storm surge elevations and all the water elevations, and we use those. In the city, we are taking into account the predictions of the sea level rise in our designs and in our standards. We don't want to put that in the Comprehensive Plan because then you get held to it, so we're doing it on our projects and on it, and you'll actually see some stuff next year coming to you with some projects that are actually addressing some of those issues with sea level rise. So, I think that answers your question, but I'm not positive, because you...
My question is, you said it was, the city is taking in control, but it's not part of our Comprehensive Plan?
No, it's not part of the Comprehensive Plan because we don't set those, we don't set those standards, FEMA sets those standards, which is the federal government, so we don't set them, we just have to adopt them.
And we can't go higher than their FEMA standard?
We can't go higher from all those issues.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Those were my questions, anything from the Board? Alright, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McCray?
Aye.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
And Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
The vote is five to zero.
Ordinance 16021, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida amending land development regulations, Chapter 1, Article 5, Section 2, Workforce Housing Program, amending subsection 1, suspension of program, continuing suspension of application or enforcement of the Workforce Housing Program for a period of one year, providing for automatic reimplementation of application and enforcement upon expiration of the stated period, providing for conflict severability codification and an effective date.
I was, I was gonna say that, but, sorry, it's too slow for you. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Alright, thank you. Open up to public comments? Seeing none? I was told that there has never been any development that used the Workforce Housing ordinance that we have, and I watched the previous meeting on November 15th, and I can't agree with allowing another year of not having any workforce housing. To me, this is just saying that we aren't caring about people who are low and moderate income people. Point Beach, Palm Beach County has a $60,000 median income, so workforce housing means that anybody who makes under $60,000, developers would have to accommodate to that level of income. So, you know, Boynton Beach, you know, my neighborhood, the heart of Boynton, has a median income of $22,000. This is an opportunity for people who have jobs, who make anywhere between 30,000 and 40,000, or 40,000 to 50,000, to get into a better place to move forward with their life. I feel that there's no reason that, you know, ever since it was enacted in 2007, it has never been used. So, you know, are we really worried about developers making more money, or are we worried about the people that are coming in here and, you know, so that they can put more in their bank accounts, maybe pay off their student loans? Yep, Commissioner Katz?
I think as it was explained to me, is this ordinance was passed kind of in the wake of the housing boom just before the collapse, so the, the goal was to, to assess potentially increasing home prices, and when, when the economy collapsed and the housing bubble burst, the reason for the continual suspension was that home prices no longer became, you know, prohibitive for homeownership, so there was no need for it at that time, and we stated at the last meeting, you weren't here for that, Mayor, but just that the statistics that were compiled to create this ordinance were based on pre-house bust conditions, so I think that, as per the direction of staff, they're just looking to hire a consultant to conduct a new study so that we can see whether or not, or how great the scope of this type of program would be, just because the, the statistics that we were working with before simply are not the realities today. So I don't, I don't oppose workforce housing, but obviously at the same time, I want to make sure that we're, we're implementing policy based on 2016 conditions, not 2006 conditions.
Absolutely, and so, you know, my conversation with staff is that the Workforce Housing ordinance that we have currently is out of date, absolutely, however, that does not mean that it won't help the residential rentals that are coming into our neighborhood, coming into our community. That would require developers such as, you know, 500 Ocean to make 10% of those rentals, so 34 out of 340 affordable. And that's kind of where I feel that those, those units are going to be the first to go, and, you know, help the, push forward the development, because there won't be, you know, there'll be people living in there. And so that's why I can't agree to allow an extension to workforce housing, because I believe, you know, my sister had it up in Maryland, and it was able for her to get a place. I know that it doesn't apply really to the purchasing of new property, because that has gone down greatly from 2006, but the rental price has greatly increased from 2006. Los Montanas, it's been going up every year for the past five years, is my example of that, and so if we don't, if any of our new developments, I'd like to have them have that requirement for the workforce housing.
Just weigh in a little bit on this, I agree, workhouse housing, we do need that, but to work with, to come up with a number of 10%, that's, that's not fair to really anybody, it might be more, it might be greater than 10% that we need, it might be less than 10%. I agree that we should do have this study, and so we have a real number, real numbers to work with, and we can hold the developers to that number, and we have statistics to back it up, versus just pulling numbers or percentages out of the air.
And yeah, I agree with that, and so what I'd like to have is that, instead of putting a full moratorium on this, is letting all developers know that any future workforce housing they'd be subject to, which I spoke with Jim, and he said that's something that we can do. And so, we won't be, it's just putting a notice of intent. Is that correct, Jim?
If you do not pass tonight's ordinance, you can amend the, you could ask that the ordinance be amended, we would return that to, to the Commission at the next meeting with additional criteria for workforce housing modified.
And so that's...
And then that would apply from that point forward, once that ordinance passes.
But that modification...
If you don't, if you don't continue the abatement of it, the ordinance takes effect, as written.
And so, can you repeat that one more time, I got a little confused?
Alright, if you don't pass tonight's, what's on the agenda tonight, the ordinance that is in place takes effect.
Yes.
Because it was only abated for a period of a year.
Mm-hmm.
If you want to change what those criteria are, you would bring that ordinance back for amendment at the next meeting, takes two readings, after the second reading, the new amendments would take, take effect.
And so with the, the new ordinance, we can state to have any future, put a moratorium on workforce housing, subject to the future workforce housing?
It wouldn't be a moratorium, the rules would take effect, so then any new project that comes in would be bound by those requirements that are set by the Commission.
So, would the Commission be okay saying, we are, we plan on having workforce housing requirement, that any development from now, you know, in between next meeting, or the next two meetings, is we're subject to the future workforce housing requirement?
I think we are saying that, by saying that we're making a commitment by having this study done, so we have some numbers to work with, I think that's what we're saying with...
Absolutely not, we're saying that anybody who comes in in between does not have to have workforce housing.
I think I'd, I'd personally rather wait till we get accurate statistics than rush, rush the program, this, this is one of those things that crosses between, you know, your political views on whether or not government should be doing this, and then the, the objective factual views on what's necessary and statistically justifiable, and right now I feel, moving forward with decade-old statistics and an ordinance written based on those statistics, would only be done because of personal views on the concept of workforce housing, not the statistical necessity or quantity, as Commissioner Casello said, we could through this study realize that some of these buildings come out might need 15% workforce housing or 20%, so I just think that, that the nature of this conversation, whether to, to not approve this extension and amend the ordinance, it points to the fact that we are, we are definitively lacking facts that would justify implementing this policy in haste.
Well, the fact is, is that average rents went up, I think, over 5%, and average rents have gone up every year since, I think, 2012.
Let me, let me, let me jump in here.
And that's kind of where I'm at, is that we'll have, this is for rental, residential rentals, not necessarily just for home buyers.
Let me jump in here for a second, because I did speak on this, and I still stand by what I said, which is, we do need workforce housing in this city, I believe that the mayor is bringing up one part, which is, we could potentially impose a percentage of the project be workforce housing, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a percentage of the project, it can also be where a certain fee is imposed on a developer in order for the city to set aside a fund, in order for the city to take charge of creating workforce housing for individuals in the future. Regarding what Commissioner Katz was saying about, you know, we don't know what the necessity is, and, and, you know, this is a capitalistic society, if we don't determine what we want, developers will simply just walk in and take what they want without having to necessarily ask us for permission, so if, if we don't necessarily put something out there saying that we want a certain amount or a certain set limit here in this city, here in these boundaries for workforce housing, we will be pushing and basically creating a gentrification effect. So that's why I feel that strongly, we need to do something necessarily quicker, in a quicker timeframe, and not push this off for an entire one-year timeframe. I do understand about, we need the study, we need to understand the, the statistics of the market, yes, that's fair, and we will take that into account, but I believe that we can do this in less of a timeframe than a year, we can do that in less of a timeframe in order to make sure that we don't let too much time go by, and we let all these developments come in, and we lack the opportunity to create workforce housing that allows for anyone and everyone, basically, I would say, most of the people in this room, to be able to live within downtown.
Let me go ahead and say what I need to say, first of all, is that, as the study, and we're suspending it for one year, I talked to the City Manager, she said this will probably be done within six months, and I'm, I'm just saying, we're suspending it for one year, it'll probably come back before, sooner than later, and I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, with the rest of them, I feel like we should get a complete study without haste before we make a final judgment.
Okay, well, I'm gonna allow for public comments now.
Thank you, Mayor. Linda Cross, 625 Casaluma Boulevard, Unit 601, Boynton Beach, Florida. One thing that, and, and, so I've got two hats here, one is the Chair of the CRA Advisory Board, one of the things that's important in the CRA District is workforce housing, affordable housing, it is a huge priority for all CRAs, as long as we keep this moratorium in place, I can tell you that we're not going to have the workforce housing that we need, you're absolutely right, Mayor. The, the point I also want to make is that you can do a study simultaneously with going ahead and permitting this ordinance to take effect. If the ordinance says 10%, I can guarantee you that there is no minimum number below 10% that we're going to come up with in a study. We will find that we need, especially with the new developments that are coming in, we are going to need 10% or 15%, I don't even know what the number is, but certainly I would think that as a community, especially in the CRA District, there is no reason not to enforce at least a 10% workforce housing commitment on our developers. Thank you.
Good evening, Brian Fitzpatrick, 409 Northeast First Street. I'm just gonna take this opportunity to address an issue that, you know, I had chatted with you guys about in an email earlier, and I really would love to see the city get fired up about creating the Boynton Beach Housing Authority. I think the time is right, you know, you look at, as I pointed out, some of the neighboring cities that have been wildly successful with development, you know, Delray Beach, West Palm Beach, Pompano Beach, Boca Raton, they all have their own housing authorities, you know, as I pointed, we are leaving millions on the table every year by not having our own housing authority. By having a housing authority in Boynton Beach, you guys could take the lead in building your own workforce housing and not rely upon a developer, I mean, to do it, I mean, sure that would, you could have those, you know, the rules in place for developers, but, you know, get fired up, let's make it happen. Thank you.
God bless, 113 West R. L. X., Boynton Beach, 306. I fully support the passion and spirit of the mayor and Christine and the CRA, we definitely have to keep at least a 10%, maybe 15%, don't give up on it for a year. Don't give up on it for a year. Don't let the rich people get any richer than they need to be. And also, this wonderful idea of having housing authority, it just struck me. I would probably propose it as, again, a public-private partnership where the city, together maybe with some private people, builds houses and really creates millions of dollars' worth of housing, maybe even the university housing for the University of Boynton. So I would like to just express my feeling that I think the mayor is quite right. It should not be postponed by another half a year or a year. At least keep that 10% or even raise it to 15%. Thank you.
Before the next speaker speak, I need to make a comment, and that is that in regards to the CRA, in it having a project coming forward, I'm almost positive that we always say, you know, what percentage of this will be workforce when they get funds from the CRA, unless I am mistaken, unless something has changed and I might have missed it.
Palm Beach Phase Based Community Development Corporation. I fully support Mayor Grant and Commissioner Ramirez in what they're proposing. Palm Beach County in general has workforce housing ordinance. Many, many, many cities have workforce housing ordinance. If you're trying to limit or gentrification, which is what is going to happen in this community, if we don't create a workforce housing ordinance, if you don't approve this ordinance here, this community will be gentrified, all the big developers will come in, and all those low-income and moderate-income people will move out. There is a lot of substance behind what Commissioner Ramirez and Mayor Grant is proposing, and we should look at it. Palm Beach County has workforce housing ordinance. It's there. Workforce housing is probably something that it is absolutely, because we're in the affordable housing business in this community. And I can tell you, we're having a really difficult time now finding affordable housing for the people that we're trying to serve. If you don't do this, then we're out of luck. It's needed. Do a little bit more research on it before you guys put this, it's, it's needed. Thank you.
Good evening. Bradley Miller, Miller Land Planning, 508 East Boynton Beach Boulevard. Here as a land planner in town and have dealt with the workforce housing issue, it's certainly something that, that's needed. From the, the big bad developer that's being made out here, it is something that, that makes the economy tick. And from their perspective, you've, all of you have heard me say it before, that a very important part of a developer is predictability. What I'm hearing tonight is, is it 10%? Is it 15%? Is it a decade-old data that, that we're trying to make decisions on? And it creates a real uncomfortable and unpredictable situation, speaking for someone who represents the, the development community. I would encourage you to go with staff. Your, your staff is, is buried in, in projects, and this, this is a very, very important issue to, to take on in a short amount of time. The data needs to be there, it needs to be updated. So I would suggest that you follow staff's recommendation. Thank you.
I'd like staff to say, you know, what I said with the 10% for new developments, that the workforce housing would have for rental communities, is that correct?
Andrew Mack, Director of Development. That is correct. In the current format that is in suspension right now, rental projects that are going to that, depending on which zoning district they're going to, that particular one would be 10%.
So for, you know, 500 Ocean, there's no workforce housing, that is correct?
Correct. They were exempted because it was in suspension at that time.
And so if they were not exempt, they'd have to have 34 units that were either low-income or moderate income?
10% of their total unit count would be, would be required to meet the workforce housing ordinance, which of that 10%, 75% is moderate income and the other 25% with low income.
And, what was I going to say?
Just to clarify, we currently, we already have contracted with Metro Study. The update to the 2006 housing study is already in progress. We expect to have a first draft in hopefully the end of December. I mean, the biggest, the biggest time constraint right now is the, the amount of workload on staff. That's why we're asking for the year. The only other alternative would be to hire another outside consultant to help us draft an ordinance. That would help us, we could move the time, the timeframe along quicker if that was the case.
What would be the cost for that?
We're probably looking at $20,000 to $30,000. And, you know-
What would the timeframe be? How quickly would you be able to move it up?
It's, it's hard to say right now. I would say, I think we could get it done in six months. That would be the quickest it could happen. You still have a lot of meetings and, you know, you want to bring, bring this back to, to the stakeholders to make sure that we're not creating something that would be, that's worthwhile, that's, that has a benefit to the community and not deter the development from, from the city.
Okay. And then the other thing I wanted to make sure is that I am correct to say that the workforce housing ordinance has never been used in the past 10 years?
Not that I'm aware of, correct. We've never had a project come through that's been required to have the workforce housing.
So that's, that's the number that I'm at, is that there's never been a chance, you know, there's, correct, there's, the CRA, if they're requesting money, we can request that they have a workforce housing, but that does not mean they're required, and they can only need 1% or 2%. So, you know, that's, you know, I'm against-
If, if we, if we do not suspend it tonight-
Yeah.
Then effective December 15th, anybody that comes in that would be, that meets the criteria for the workforce housing would be subject to it.
Correct.
So the projects that are submitted after the 15, on the 15th or after would be subject to the workforce housing ordinance.
So that's, that's what I was trying to say earlier, is that how quickly can we get something to say that, that any new development will be subject to the future workforce housing ordinance?
You really can't do that until you know what the ordinance is going to be. I mean, going back to that, I mean, you can say that, no one's going to want to, they're all going to hold off until they know exactly what's going to be in front of them.
This kind of draws to the heart of my concern about pushing this forward. The conversation right now we're literally having is how fast can we do something that we don't know the details about? And whether I support it or not, which I fully do, 100% support workforce housing, I just think this is a, it's a serious change potentially to the, the development coming out of the ground now and in the future, and that to do it blind would just be, would be reckless. Again, I support workforce, workforce housing 100%, but the, the idea that we're asking staff, you know, how fast can something be done, what's the minimum amount of time we need, these are, these are kind of questions that you ask when, again, as I said earlier, yes, we like workforce housing, but the, the facts need to be there. You know, there's, there's a lot of stuff going on downtown. We haven't really had any discussion philosophically about where workforce housing should be, how much of it. So there's, there's subjective and objective nature, and I feel like we simply have not hashed this out. At no point during the consolidated plan discussion was workforce housing discussed, to my recollection. At no point during the, the town square meetings that we had was workforce housing discussed. So I feel like there's just a, a simple lack of information all around right now, and the, the one-year period being requested, as stated by staff, is just to guarantee they have enough time to do this. They might very well be done it in six to eight months, and that we could revisit this in a shorter time period. But I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion to, to continue.
I'm just going to ask for final comments, so that's, is that it?
Yep.
Vice Mayor McCray, any final comment?
Yeah. My final comment is that I'm in favor of workforce housing, the one-year suspension. I'd give staff time enough to do a thorough study to bring this back before us, before we make a vote on it, and that's where I stand.
Okay. My final comment is, is that we put a moratorium last December that was going to end in a year. Not to say that staff didn't know that it was going to end in a year, but I feel that what has been told with our current workforce housing ordinance as a minimum, 10%, it seems reasonable to me. And so, you know, I'm against, you know, the proposed ordinance. Commissioner Romulus?
I hear what Commissioner Katz is saying. I also hear what Bradley Miller said as well, in terms of the ambiguity that may be placed by having this ordinance put out tonight. And that is why, last commission meeting, I did make the motion of potentially having it moved up to six months. And according to what you're saying, it would cost us $20,000, $30,000. I've also asked our city manager, is that money available? And she did say that we did manage to scrape together enough funds to potentially have that available to make a consulting group possible, to help staff move this process along a little bit quicker. So we are concerned about rushing, yes, I agree with that. So if we have alternatives, if we have the means to be able to let the study go through, allow enough time to pass where we can get adequate information to put out an ordinance that makes sense, that's not just being rushed, then I believe that that's a fair and, and accurate question to ask and, and a request to make of the commission, who all of you have said tonight, you agree with workforce housing. So if we have the ability and the means, $20,000 or $30,000, to make that possible, why not? That's the request that I'm making, and I'm asking the commission to stand behind that. If you stand for workforce housing, then I believe that a motion tonight should be set and seconded, that we can push this ordinance to at least be reconsidered in six months instead of the one-year extension.
Have the ability, if the, the information comes back and is analyzed within six months, even though there's a one-year suspension, to bring this back up and reinstated at that point, correct?
Correct, absolutely. Once, once we have the, the ordinance, the draft language, and it's, and a format that could be presented to you, we can bring it back in advance of the one year.
So by all means, if in six months that information's available and we're able to make an informed decision, I would have no reservations about at that six or seven-month mark, moving this up and not, we don't have to wait until the, the 12-month period, the, the extension is over. The problem is that if we do change this from one year to six months, and the data is not necessarily available or the analysis hasn't been made, then we have the same conversation again in six months. I think that binds us, whereas this gives us the option to visit in six months or potentially longer if need be.
I agree with Commissioner Katz.
Commissioner Casello, do you have any final comments?
I agree with the conversation. If I'm going to vote on an ordinance, I want facts and figures that pertain to 2016, not 2006. And if staff is saying that, you know, what Commissioner Katz had alluded to, is that a year doesn't mean it's going to be a year. It could be six months, seven months. I would hate to have this conversation with a six-month timeframe on it, having this conversation in six months and that study's not in yet. It just gives the staff a little leeway, and I, I think the numbers that get in will be the real numbers, and we can base that percentage that we've been talking, throwing around here on the real numbers.
All right. Okay. And thank you all. Can we get a consensus that we would want to spend the extra money to get it done as quickly as possible from the board? Commissioner Romulus said so. Commissioner Katz, are you okay with that, or are you?
You're saying that, that just with staff alone, there's the potential for this to be done within six months?
I, no.
That's a stretch.
Yeah, that's a big stretch. I mean, with the amount of projects we have right now, we, we have at least 19 projects, of which we have another notice of intent that's later on the agenda today. I, I don't see it happening by staff within the six months. If we hire the consultant, I think we can make that deadline, but not, not with just staff. I mean, staff will have to be involved with this project as well. We'll have a project manager assigned that'll work with the outside consultant.
Let me, let me ask a question to a city manager. We're already formulating a lot of work out on contracts, and this is bothering me. I'm just saying, you know, we need more bodies. I feel like we need to get staff hired to do what they're supposed to. I know that you're going to tell us about, you advertise, no bodies available, et cetera, but we need bodies, we need to get the bodies in. We got consultant, you know, consultant for the community, whatever that is about the code thing, and I, and I'm not in favor of that, and I'm just saying, it would seem like we're just wasting money when we can get individuals to come in, to start doing their jobs, and, and formulate and say, and staff don't have enough time and everything, then I feel like we need to get enough staff there to do their jobs so that we could, they can bring information back to this commission. But I was saying that we need to pay for another study, another study. Ever since I've been a commissioner, we've been paying for studies after studies, and they've been just sitting up on shelves. I'm not in favor of that.
So Commissioner Casello, do you have any comments, you know, to having the consultant hired or not?
I'm, I'm in favor of spending that money to get some real data.
Okay. Well, I think we got, you know, not a major consensus, but we were looking for is, to hire that third-party consultant to get it done as soon as possible. You know, my last statement is, is that I don't think we're going to find out that there's more workforce housing from 2006 than in 2016. We're going to find that there's less workforce housing. And so at that, I'd like to get a roll call.
Mayor Grant?
No.
Vice Mayor McCray?
Wait, I need to know what am I voting on, because you just said about-
The one-year suspension.
The one-year suspension.
The one-year suspension.
It was just consensus I was asking for.
I'm, I'm in favor of the one-year suspension.
Okay.
Yes, vote?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
No.
And Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
The vote is three to, three to two.
Okay. Item 12A, would like, someone like to remove that from the table?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Commissioner Casello, would you like to begin?
Yeah. Start off with this. First and foremost, let's start off by this, will have no effect on this sitting commission here. When I first got elected, I believe in 2013, the rule of thumb was that you had to have 33% plus one to win with multiple candidates in the election, before you'd have to have a runoff. That rule was changed right after that election, and now it's 50% plus one. I only bring this up for the argument of cost. I think the city clerk will tell you that to have a special election or a runoff election, it's for a district, it's between $30,000 and $50,000. If it's a mayoral race, it's somewhere up in the $70,000 thing. But also, this, you know, these candidates who run, some candidates are just, I call them fringe candidates. They, they throw their, their names in a hat. And in a two-man race, they become the third guy, siphons votes off, which sometimes causes a runoff. So I'm just looking at this, a perspective of potential saving money. I think that the candidate who works the hardest and it has, is on message, is going to win, regardless of, you know, 50 or 33. This just eliminates the possibility of special elections. That's all I'm asking. It's just for discussion.
I'm, I'm going to ask, are those numbers correct? Was the 2016 $70,000?
Yes.
For the, for the runoff?
Not for the runoff. That was for both the original election, which we had very little expense from because that was done in conjunction with the presidential preference, and so the supervisor of elections absorbed a lot of those costs, so we had minimal cost for that election. But the whole election process was $78,000.
And how much did the-
And probably not even $15,000 of that was for the original, the first general election.
So how much did the city expend?
But that was citywide, remember?
So how much did the city expend for that one runoff?
On the runoff?
Yes.
Well, I, I don't have an exact figure, but I would say it was real close to $65,000.
Okay.
Also, just to throw in here, usually if there's a runoff, the, the turnout is even lower than the, than the original turnout, so it's just a point of information.
Let me make a comment. I think we need to look at what our charter says, you know, and, and it went up, I, it's my time. Our charter states about that 50-plus, what I'm just saying, it was put out before the citizens, and the citizens of this city, they voted for 50-plus one. My take is that if we want to change this to 33% plus one, it will have to go back to the citizens and let them make that decision. We can just ask that it be put on there, this is what we're looking for, but this is not something that we can make a decision on.
And so how much is the cost to have a citywide for the one referendum? In the addition, because we are going to have to-
It's in conjunction with an actual election, it would just be extra ink?
No, because, no, because District 2 and District 1 and 3 are not voting, unless there's a referendum.
You're going to have more precincts, more poll workers, more, yeah.
I, I wish this was brought up, you know, last election-
You're absolutely right.
Because, you know, you're doubling the cost of this election, and so the people have to vote-
You're absolutely right.
For this one, and I don't think it's, you know, and I also take offense to this because I got elected because of it.
Oh, that's not even-
And, and you know, the, the fringe, and you're talking about fringe candidates. Commissioner Romulus is sitting next to you, it didn't, it didn't bother her. So, you know, that's kind of where I'm at, that-
Well, just goes to-
Without this, I, I definitely would not have won, raising $3,000 compared to Mayor Taylor's $45,000.
Just goes through my point, that you weren't fringe candidates, you were real candidates with message. That's why you won.
No, it's because there was a runoff. I lost, you know, Mayor Taylor had 5,400 votes to my 2,800, and so it was the runoff that allowed me to get elected. But any more from the commission?
I'll let the speaker go. The part of this, one of the parts that I added to this, I believe, solves all of our problems and combines the ideas of the current system and what Commissioner Casello was talking about, so I will wait to present that to you after we allow our speaker to talk.
David Katz, 67 Midwood Lane. Bringing up this issue of the 50% plus one again is like Brigadoon. You may want to Google what that means. This was voted on by 74%, 74% of the people approved, going back to 50% plus one. To correct Commissioner Casello, it's 35% plus one. When you ran the first time, you might have been considered a fringe candidate. You did have major backing, you ran a good campaign, but you were more than two candidates.
How does that make me fringe?
I'm sorry?
How does that make me a fringe candidate?
Well, you said people run who are fringe candidates.
There's people who run that don't do nothing, but others throw their names in a hat. Those are fringe candidates. That's how I define fringe candidates.
Okay. Anyway, I think it's a little disrespectful to people who decide to pay a filing fee and want to run and put their name out, however, whoever energy they put into it, they do it. You talk about wanting to save money. I find it a little hypocritical, you just spent 20,000 or 30,000 on a consultant. I mean, you won't spend $75,000 for a park in the meadows, you won't want to spend money for a runoff to protect 65% of the voters who may vote against the person who gets the 35% plus one, but you'll spend 20 or 30 grand on a consultant. So when the money's there for what you want to spend it on, it's there. I think the people voted. You're going to waste money by putting it up for a vote for March, for a citywide vote, when there's only two commission districts that are up. If you're going to do this, and you need to do it, which I don't think you should, you should wait till there's a citywide election, which would come in 2019. And if you're going to do it, do it then. In terms of the fact that people don't come out for a runoff that much, you know, the percentage goes down, and I agree with that. I would suggest, and I don't know, I mean, I haven't revisited the charter since we were on the Charter Review Committee, maybe Jim can address this, whether it's done by state statute or a city can do it, is to take the two-week runoff and extend it out to four weeks, so that the candidates can get a better message out, the city can get a better message out, and they can run a better campaign to get more people out to vote, so that the runoff would not be two weeks from the original election, but four weeks. And I think that would be an improvement and a compromise, but not to go back to 35% plus one, because again, you've got 65% of the people who voted against that person, and that's a majority of the people, and you shouldn't abridge their rights to come back and vote again. Thank you.
Dr. Piot Blas, 113 West Aralee, Drive 1236. Well, I am the national representative of the fringe candidates with a message. And we just, and we just, and we just had a president elected in the United States. Just the independent candidates with a message decided the last election, so please treat us gently with a little respect. And I would say that, but I have to add that everybody here who is one fair and square, you beat me, but you did better than I. Nevertheless, you know, sometimes the message of the independent or fringe candidates is very important. So democracy means that majority rules, but minority rights, yes? So let's just be delicate about that, that's all I wanted to say.
Buck Buchanan, 807 Ocean Plate Drive. The people have spoken loudly and clearly about this issue. David Katz provided statistics, and the people are not stupid. They understood that when they went for 50% plus one, that that was going to involve money if there were runoffs. The people are willing to do that because they wanted to have the representative they wanted. The last time, when there was a mayor oral contest under the old rule, and that mayor got in, this is 2010, I think, the, that mayor got in with 20 votes over the 33%. That mayor also eventually was removed from office and was charged criminally. So the people want to have the final say, they know it costs money. The people have spoken loudly and clearly, and also about term limits. To readdress this is insulting to the people, and in case nobody's noticed, the people are tired of being insulted. Look at the last election, both here and nationally. This is not something that should be addressed again.
Woodrow Hay, 427 Northwest Fifth Avenue. It's interesting to be last, what you were going to say has been said, but I would just echo again, that I'm supportive of 50% plus one. When we had the 35% plus one, that didn't turn out too well, as has been stated, and I hope that you're listening to the voices of the people, that 65% of the people did not want that particular 35% plus one person. So I'm looking at it from the standpoint that we really don't, shouldn't go back to what the people have already stated. They've already, it was a big discussion, as I recall, because I was part of that process when it came up, and we had a long discussion about this, this whole idea of 35% and 50%. And we brought it to the people, the people spoke, and I think we need to listen to what the people have already said. Thank you.
No more comments? Commissioner Katz, would you like to explain?
Yeah, so I think a lot of what...
You wanted me to hold up the flow chart?
We're going to, we're going to put like a brief video up. I'm going to put on my teacher hat here and put a one-and-a-half-minute video that's going to convey to you my idea in the simplest way possible, and you're going to love it. Basically, basically what I'm hearing is that the thrust of what Commissioner Casello was saying, that there is additional costs associated with runoff, and that turnout decreases. Those are facts, and those are negative facts. On the other side, individuals came up and spoke and said that the 50-plus-one vote was voted on recently, and that the public is in favor of such a majority vote, and I have no problem with that either. I have a voting method that is employed in various cities throughout the country, as well as other countries of the world, that allows us to avoid the decrease in voter turnout, take on zero extra costs, and maintain that 50-plus-one threshold. And what that's called is instant runoff voting, IRV. Sometimes it's called ranked choice voting. Rather than try to explain it upfront, again, we'll play this video, if they have it queued up back there, but basically, you know, a lot of people vote for candidates to come in third or fourth place and then get tossed out, and this method shows you that even though symbolically, you should absolutely vote for whoever you believe in, sometimes you want to vote for a candidate you believe in that does not necessarily have a chance, and then in a runoff, your vote is simply thrown out. So watch this video, and then we'll see if this is something that everybody enjoys.
Vote for your favorite color.
The instant runoff way.
Instead of voting for just one color, you get to rank your top three.
Well, purple is the best, but if I can't have purple, then I want blue, and if neither of those wins, then I guess I could live with yellow.
Now let's count up everybody's votes.
Under instant runoff rules, it's not enough just to get the most votes.
You need a majority.
More than 50% of the votes.
So purple's ahead, but it only has seven votes. It needs at least 11 to win.
So we eliminate whoever's in last place.
Sorry, yellow fans, we're going to your second choice.
Two more for pink.
One for purple.
But no one has 11 votes yet.
Still no majority. Bye-bye, blue!
Three for purple.
Two for pink.
And we have a winner.
The instant runoff way.
So again, the thrust of instant runoff is that you literally vote for who you would vote for in the runoff on the same ballot. Again, this saves the extra cost, this saves the uncertainty of elections where there's four or five people and you know there's going to be a runoff. It maintains this 50.1% threshold. Florida actually was one of the first states in the country to implement this over 100 years ago, so this is something, again, that, you know, it concerns me. Again, I teach government and economics, so this is about increasing the efficiency of elections, it's right up my alley. In our most recent election, just to throw some statistics out there, the amount of people who voted in the initial vote, in the general election for mayor and the commissioner's seats that were up, was 13,000 people. The amount of people who voted in the runoff election was 4,000 people, 65% less people voted. So the reality is that the two candidates who were in the runoff for mayor only received 20% and 22% of the original vote in that runoff. So the statistics bear that it's not necessarily, you could say that the runoff allows for 50% to be achieved, but that 50% is of a diminished voting population. So this instant runoff, and, you know, subject to approval by the supervisor of elections, it allows you, if, for instance, during the mayoral race, you were an avid supporter of Dr. Blas and you voted for him, but in your heart, you knew that while he might be the right candidate, he might not necessarily prevail, you're allowed to check a second option. So if an individual does not win, and someone does not achieve 50% off the bat, those votes are then flipped to whoever their second choice was. So the 50% is still maintained. It basically just saves the time, energy, cost, and decreased voter turnout that basically skews the results of the elections. So we're able to get what everybody wants here, 50% is still what's necessary, there is no additional cost beyond, you know, whatever the extra ink on the particular initial ballot is, and it maintains that voter turnout. Essentially, when you have a runoff and 65% less people vote, that means that 8,000 votes from that first run, first race, the general election, were thrown out. Nobody got 50%, so everything got thrown out, and only 4,000 people showed back up. So I think that Woodrow put this best, former commissioner and mayor, hey, that we don't want to go back, we want to actually look forward. And I believe that this is personally, you know, again, as a student of government and economics, this is a unevolved form of voting to ensure that you can cast your symbolic vote for a candidate who might not be likely to win, and if that does not work out, your second-choice vote is able to assist in the election if nobody reaches that 50%. If somebody reaches 50% in the initial vote, it's over. But the idea is if no one gets 50% at the onset, instead of conducting a whole new election with the spending and the turnout decreasing, you just look at people's second choices who picked the candidates who were eliminated, and they get cycled back into it. So that's kind of, that's kind of much flail. Again, stuff like this would change the charter and therefore require a referendum, but I think that something like this, to me at least, is how voting should go, because it doesn't lead to diminished turnout and therefore diminish representation through these certain runoff elections throughout the country. So I'd look for, you know, comment or support from the board just to investigate with the supervisor of elections whether or not this is something that could be done on the ballot, but I think that being a city that takes the lead on this, you know, this is a new idea, it's a progressive idea, it's an efficient idea, so it saves costs, so the taxpayers should like it, and it counts every single vote, so I would hope that other cities and potentially counties, and there are certain states that have pushed this at the national level for congressional races up in the Northeast. This is kind of, in my opinion, the future of voting, and I would love to be the city that takes a progressive stand and demands that we count every vote in an election, not cast out votes because someone didn't get to 50%. Let them all stand and see who gets the most after that instant runoff occurs on the ballot.
Commissioner Romulus, I see you've got some questions. Do you want to...
So I definitely loved the innovation. The video was very graphically educational for me, in terms of understanding what it is that you're proposing, but some concerns that instantly raised for me, because I don't necessarily see how this would work, who's counting these votes? Is it people, is it machines? And then when you especially look at Florida and the cynicism that's been accounted to...
It's a standard ballot, it just would have an additional column where you would, instead of, so for your race, for instance, you were able to clear that 50% by a handful of votes. Had you not cleared that 50% by a handful of votes, say 5, 10, or 20, the third candidate who was eliminated, their second-choice votes would then become votes for what would have been you or former commissioner of Fitzpatrick. So, you know, again, if somebody comes in just shy of that 50%, if someone gets 49% or 48% of the vote, to hold a runoff when they're 1% or 2% off, let the individuals who voted for the third candidate who was eliminated be the tiebreaker and sort their votes back in.
Right, and I get all that, and, you know, again, I'm really looking at the cynism that's been placed, the cynicism that's been placed against Florida, you know, when it comes to elections. How do you, I mean, I just feel like we're getting on a whole other level of things, but the other thing that I want to also point to that is that you have a lot of people who may not have the education level to even be able to do this whole ranking system. So how do we account for that in this type of election process, where if, how would they, I guess these are just questions that I'm kind of running off with.
And they're valid, the instructions would be on the ballot, and it basically says, if you're voting in a race with candidates A, B, C, and D, to mark off your first choice, and then mark off who would be your second choice, or who would be your third choice. So if your first choice does not come in the top two, then it would shift to your second choice if nobody had received 50%. So the ballot would clearly explain that this is your first choice, this is your second choice, and third choice, and I, you know, again, with...
So the individual would be responsible for putting 1, 2, 3, 4 next to the candidate they want?
No, it would be set, set in specific columns, which would say, "Choice number one, you mark off the candidate you want. Second column, choice number two, you mark off a different candidate." You can vote for the same candidate multiple times, but it would, it would be irrelevant. But, yeah, it would, it would, the ballot language and the ballot format would be clearly, clearly indicated, so that anyone looking could see, all right, this is my primary pick, this is who I want, but if they lose, here's who I would take as a second pick.
Are you saying that they could chose the same person for first, second, and third?
So if you chose, say you chose somebody and they came in the top two, and then for your second choice, you picked the same person, your second choice is irrelevant because you picked somebody in the top two already?
But if you picked the opponent, I see what you're saying, it's only...
So if I picked the person who comes in fifth place, first, second, and third pick, my vote, I would be choosing not to have my vote counted because I'm picking the...
So you're saying that it's only for people that care, want to have a second vote or a third vote?
Well, if, so if...
But people aren't required to have a second or a third vote?
No, you could leave them blank. Basically, if I voted for Stephen B. Grant, and you came in first two, I wouldn't have to put a second vote.
Okay.
Second shot. David Katz, 67 Midwood Lane, our friend said, "Everybody raise their hand, do they understand what Commissioner Katz said?" All right, okay, I'm surprised, okay. Again, to put this out on the ballot this time, you'd need a charter amendment, which would cost the city a lot of money. My suggestion that if this is something you want to move forward with, I suggest you do workshops, education, and put it out in 2019 to save the city money, because you're going to have a citywide election anyway. I'd be curious, you, Commissioner Katz had mentioned, there are many cities or states, what that actual number is. Is it 150, or is it 15? How new is this? How is it working?
It's a small number of cities, but it's been around for, Florida again instituted it back in 1912, so...
There's a Wikipedia page on it.
I'll check it out, thank you. And again, I think that concerning, going back to the concern of the turnout, I think, and the city attorney didn't respond, and you guys didn't ask him, but maybe he'll respond, is it okay for the city to adjust the two-week window to four weeks, or is that by state statute?
I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, that's why you didn't respond, thank you. And again, I think this would be wrong to put on the ballot now because of the cost to the city. I think you need to do it when it's going to be a citywide election. Thank you.
Woodrow Hay, 427 Northwest Fifth Avenue. Again, the point that I was going to make, but I have another point. You said this was done back in 1912, and I just wondering, you know, I understand it, and it has potential, I think, but if it's, if it's that good, I wonder why we haven't done it before now, and the country and other states are not grabbing and gravitating to such a wonderful idea. I think, as you have stated earlier tonight, that more information is needed here, and more talk about it, and more understanding, more dialogue. I can kind of put my mind around it, but I have a lot of questions that I would like to have answered before I would support that. So are you about to say something?
Yeah, no, I agree with you, and if, you know, if cost is a concern, and further education's a concern, then I wouldn't object to pushing it to a date later determined, such as a citywide election. With regards to why this type of election isn't necessarily held or faded from popularity, the simple answer is, like most other electoral rules, they were written by the two major parties in this country, and this system allows for third-party votes to be recycled and potentially alter the outcome. So Democrats and Republicans for eons have not wanted to have these types of third-party votes cycled back in because it would alter their election. They'd rather fight this one-on-one battle than, say, have, you know, those Jill Stein or Gary Johnson votes cycled back into the race and tip, tip the outcome one way or another. So that, I would say the main factor is that the two-party system and the major parties, along with other rules they've created throughout... along with other rules they've created throughout the, you know, the centuries now, have done it to restrict the voice of the people by basically saying, "If you didn't vote for one of these top two candidates, your vote is going to be thrown out, and maybe you show up to a later date for a runoff." Or if there's no majority rule, then the plurality automatically wins. So, the two-party system kind of perpetuates itself.
Okay. We'll talk.
Buckview Candidate, 07 Ocean Innwood Drive. It's an interesting proposition. But my question is, are there any statistics whatsoever that show how this works and actually avoids runoffs? Because in our local elections, they get pretty specific, pretty emotional, and I can see where a lot of people would put down their candidate and maybe not even bother putting a second candidate or whatever. So, that when you add all the votes up, one candidate's still down at 50%, you still have a runoff. So, I was just wondering if there's any stats or anything on this that shows its effectiveness.
The way, I'd like to, you know, I'm looking at the Wikipedia page, and the main reason this is for is when you have a higher number of candidates where, you know, there's, you know, five or more, this is something that would be very beneficial. Because let's say you have three candidates, there's really no reason, the person that, you know, then it's better that you have a runoff because most likely, the person who got in third place, the first person is going to win. I'm looking at the Oakland Mayoral Election 2010, and it seems that the second-place person won after the third round. However, she did not get 50% majority.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So, you're still in the...
So, the runoff does not guarantee that a 50% majority will be reached.
Right. Although I can see that probably in the election, I cited earlier, that that probably would have worked, that the second-place candidate would have actually won the election because everybody that had voted for the first-place candidate had already voted for him. Nobody was ever going to vote, hey, when are you going to pick up any votes in runoff? So, I was just wondering, I mean, you get all this interaction, and I just wonder if there's any, you know, if anybody's ever done, a study on it that shows that this actually has been effective.
Yeah. And given more time, because again, I'm not, I'm not willing to push this immediately or anything like that. We have an election in March, and it's not citywide, so I hear those concerns. We would absolutely be able to put more information together. At this point, I would just simply request that the board allow us to move forward with consulting with the supervisor of elections in Palm Beach County and also the State Board of Elections to ensure that this complies with state statute for elections. But again, I think that, you know, ultimately, it combines all the positive aspects of an election and a runoff without the cost and decreased voter turnout.
And it's obviously better suited for a nonpartisan election too than a party-type election. So, okay. Thank you.
Piotz Blas, the usual address in 113. I'm really proud to have Katz as my commissioner. And as some of you know, I am a professor of mathematics, and this strikes me as a wonderful idea that needs to be pursued and can make our city quite famous and really important. Also, your analysis of why the two-party system is resisting, it seems to be right on target. I would like to augment your proposal a little bit. You would not be surprised. I'm one of the pioneers of the World Wide Web. I think we should start looking at secure, authenticated elections according to your schema. Then we will be the best place in the world. I volunteer hereby to assist with the mathematical statistical experiments, and I have several students all over the world in this University of Boynton that are working on web-enabled elections. So, brilliant idea, and let's not lose it, and let's study it deeply and make sure it works fairly. And I think it may be an antidote to the terrible elections we've seen recently nationally and all over the place. Thank you.
Let me go ahead and say, myself, I understand what you're saying, but I think this would be something that will be beneficial and more useful in a classroom setting where they're picking colors like you had up there. But I think when you're picking individuals, I think that we need to stick to what we already have. I'm not in favor of signing my name saying, "Let's look into this." I don't want it to go any further, not with my name attached to it.
So, right now, I believe, Commissioner Katz, you had a motion to have us look into the instant runoff voting with the supervisor of elections?
Yeah, have legal or staff consult them and to get their take on it and make sure, again, that it's, you know, is still legal in accordance with state and county statutes and things of that nature, and look it over so that for that next citywide race, that it's a potential option to put on the ballot.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
So, passes four to one. Commissioner Casello, would you like to make a motion regarding your...
Yeah, it doesn't seem there's a consensus to go that way. Like I said...
If you don't want to make the motion, you don't have to.
I'll, I just wanted to say, this was strictly for a cost-saving issue here. I know that in the past, the 65%, 75%, depending who you talk to, voted overwhelming to make it 50% plus one. I'll pull my motion, my thing, and just, let's move on.
Okay. I'd like to pass the gavel and motion to table the, my request to the two-on-one helpline. All those in...
It has been, we have a motion on the floor. To table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's table to next meeting. Yep. Thank you. Moving on to item E. Proposed resolution approve and authorize the execution of intra-local agreement for vote processing equipment used in election services by and between Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections and the City of Boynton Beach.
No move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed Resolution Number R-16-163, approve the resolution designating canvassing board for March 2017 municipal election.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed Resolution Number R-16-164, consideration of proposed notice of intent, which would establish a moratorium temporarily freezing any administrative processing or approval of group homes. Jim, would you like to elaborate, please?
Sure. As you know, because you've read the document that was issued by the Department of Justice and HUD, which was a joint guidance letter that came out about a month and a half ago, they have provided some additional input and analysis of the way that municipalities can deal with group homes. The purpose of the agenda item tonight is to initiate Boynton Beach's procedure for studying whether or not provisions of our code that would be affected by whatever is in the guidance, after we do the full analysis of the guidance, should result in amendments to city code and regulations regarding zoning, land use, occupancy, business tax receipts, reasonable accommodation, and the like. Ordinarily, this item would not have appeared on your agenda for action tonight. It would have been on for informational purposes and consideration whether to put it on the agenda. But I know this has been a very hot issue because it touches upon group homes of all types, and other cities have been announcing or indicating that they're going to be passing moratoriums while they conduct study periods. So, it's on your agenda tonight. If you're interested in doing that, it will appear again on the next agenda because our notice of intent procedure is required that it come back for a public hearing. So, we would modify it based upon your direction tonight and move it forward if you so desire.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Last item under New Business, discussion of remaining cemetery plots and possible restrictions to Boynton Beach residents. City Clerk? Judy?
Let me go ahead and take the lead in this.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Being a certified funeral service practitioner, licensed funeral director and embalmer for the state of Florida, it was brought to my attention by Judy that we have individuals, we had one individual who used our cemetery, okay, and they used a church address, and they had a person from out of town that was buried, okay? And let me explain, the reason that we need to have something in writing is that we only have so many plots here in the city of Boynton, and it's happening in Broward County. Broward County, let me go to Day County first. Day County has outpriced themselves for cemetery plots, and if you're not able to bury yourself in Day County, they will bring you over to Broward County, they will get somebody saying, "I'm a cousin of so-and-so," and just get an address, and then you're buried there because it's cheaper. Now, you're getting people that's coming from these areas trying to get here in Boynton because we're inexpensable. I'm just saying, we're cheaper. We need to let people know that if you're not a city resident, you have not lived here and been productive in the city of Boynton. Now, if you have gone away, your kid's taken you away, I'm just saying, you passed away out of state, that's different. But I'm just saying, for as a person who's coming into town, you know, who has not been a resident of this city and want to be buried in our city cemetery, we need to say, you know, "No, thank you." And there's nothing wrong with saying, "No, thank you," because we only have 400 cemetery plots left, and these should be for the citizens of Boynton and their families, not for John Doe, who cannot be buried in another county because of expenses. And this is why we need to put a moratorium, saying that you must be a city resident, have lived here in this city, et cetera.
So, can I get a, I guess, so I guess we need to, Jim, do we need to create a resolution or an ordinance for this?
We do. We need to create something with some detail about what categories of individuals can be buried here, starting with residents, and then build in exceptions to that as well because there may be circumstances where a non-resident who has family buried here might fit within an exception, or a former elected official that moved away and wants to come back and be buried here, something of that nature.
Or he moved here and got buried.
So, Vice Mayor McCray, do you have any suggestions on regarding the, you know, residency requirements, how many years for current residents versus past residents?
Well, you would not have to have a residence requirement. I'm just saying, you know, if you have lived here, I'm just saying, you know, and the attorney, he can, that's language already out there. All he has to do is just go and read another one from another cemetery and bring it back to us. That's all. It's already written.
I'll dig up some rules.
Okay.
Yeah.
I knew it was coming. I knew it was coming.
Waited all night for that, didn't you?
Yeah, dig up some rules. Okay.
All right.
He has direction.
So, I believe, so I get, so Vice Mayor McCray, we had a motion to, for the directions for the ordinance. Did I, can I get a second, please?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the CRA Advisory Board. Pending items is City Service Survey for the CRA. So, there's nothing here. Linda? I know that this is something that I requested that the CRA Advisory Board look at, and do you have any comments regarding that?
Sure. I don't know what's in your packet. Linda Cross, 625 Casa Loma...
We have nothing in our packet, so...
Nothing is not good.
Okay.
625 Casa Loma Boulevard, Unit 601, Boynton Beach. What the CRA Advisory Board did was we had two folks that volunteered to do some research as to how city surveys go. In addition, several of us attended the FRA meeting, and we talked about city surveys there. There was actually, one of the presentations was about how they did a survey and how they've done it every third year, fourth year, fifth year, whatever, to get a baseline and then continue forward, and what are the things they're measuring. So, what we did was we did a lot of research. The thing, there's a packet about Yay Thick that we came up with that had different cities, what they've done, what some of the questions that were asked, and what are some of the stakeholders that they involved. And our recommendation was that, number one, we thought it was a great idea because we really don't have a survey like this. I believe the survey was just really within the CRA district. One of the things that we looked into, though, was the survey, and it was a little bit broad, the direction that we got, but understanding that the CRA as an agency doesn't provide services, the city provides services. So, there's an issue as to whether you want to get a survey about the services provided within the CRA district, or whether you want to get a survey about how well you think the CRA district is progressing. So, there's kind of two issues there. So, we looked at both of those. There's a whole multitude of questions you can ask, and our recommendation was that it requires at least a committee that it would include somebody from Chamber of Commerce because you want to have the business stakeholders, somebody from, you know, maybe from INCA and BIG and some of the other residential areas that are represented within the CRA district. CRA staff, city staff would need to come together and put together this survey.
Okay.
So, we recommended we do the survey, but we also recommended that there's a group that needs to do it.
So, one of the things about the CRA Advisory Board is that you can take directions from the city board?
Correct.
And so, it doesn't need to be limited to the CRA?
No, but the work that we do, I thought that the direction was about, and within the CRA district, but that's correct.
And that's kind of what I want to talk about with the board now, is that do we want to rebrand the Community Redevelopment Advisory Board to include things outside of the CRA that would help the city, such as the City Services Survey? Because we currently have the city commission who created this CRA Advisory Board, and they're reporting to us as well. I feel that instead of just calling it the Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board, that we call it the Community Development Board, and that we give them a broader scope of the whole city to help develop.
Oh, that's way past the survey.
And so, that's, yeah, this is, I think you're done. But that's kind of where I, you know, I'd like for the board to take a look at, to think about that, to say, "Hey, we have these seven individuals that are learning so much information. They've gone through programs regarding city services surveys. Why don't we have them use that information?" Do you feel that you can come up with the 20 questions, the CRA Advisory Board currently can come up with 20 questions?
Well, I think that what we decided was we really need other stakeholders because we might come up with 20 questions, but they may not be the questions that, say, the business community would want to be, want to ask, or that the INCA or BIG or some of the residential areas would want to ask. So, we'd want a collaborative environment.
Can I get a yes or a no?
Not by ourselves, no.
No, you don't feel you can do a survey by yourselves?
No.
Okay.
Okay, let me jump in here since we're talking...
And we need staff help, too.
All right. Since we're talking about a survey, and then you just said the magic word, "Staff." Okay, Laura, we already doing a survey citywide, right?
No, sir.
Well, are we going to do one citywide, a survey of our services?
I think we were planning on doing one. Eleanor, is it in this year's budget? Because I need you to refresh my memory. I think we have 10, 12,000, I think it's $10,000 to do a citywide survey.
Okay, so...
It's part of our strategic planning. It's going to be year two.
Okay. If it's in there to do a survey, then why don't you all get together and, you know, your question, and see if they overlap. I'm just saying, let one survey...
It would overlap. You're right.
Yeah.
No, we have a budget to do. I don't, you know, we're prepared to do it next year. I don't know that the advisory board needs to do it, honestly.
Okay, no, that's great, then. And then, so I guess we'll, thank you for all the work. And then, I just would like to see about, you know, thinking about the city boards, thinking that should we be speaking with the CRA Advisory Board moving forward?
The city commission?
Yeah.
I don't understand what you're saying, city, moving forward.
Well, the question is, is the CRA Advisory Board, should they only deal with the CRA, or should they be coming up here, and should we have this continued on our city agenda?
For the survey, I think we could take that off. I'm just saying...
No, no, I'm, yeah, that's the, absolutely, I think we can take it off, that the city staff will handle that.
But as far as the Community Redevelopment Advisory Board coming up here, doing our commission meetings, if that's what you're stating?
Yes.
I don't see there's a need for it unless they have something to present. I'm just saying, a CRA needs to be presented at the CRA.
Okay. I think that's how, and so, I'll pass the gavel, and I'd like to make a motion to, you know, remove the Community Redevelopment Advisory Board off the city agendas.
Been properly moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
I just hit this. I'm just kidding.
Yeah.[1760.23] I'll let you do it at the end. Moving on to legal. Proposed ordinance?
Ordinance 16022, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida approving the annual update of the five-year capital improvement schedule of capital improvement elements, CIE, of the city's comprehensive plan, providing for conflict severability in an effective date.
No move.
Can I get a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance roll call.
Yeah.
Well, I got a discussion first. Does this include the review committee for the one cent sales tax?
No, sir. That item will be coming forward to you in January. This is just a, this is a statutory requirement for our land, our comprehensive plan that we have to update every five years. It's more of a housekeeping item, has nothing to do with the surtax matter.
But some of the surtax money will go towards this?
As capital.
Okay.
Yes.